Mr. Whelan? Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterthwaite?
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Chenoweth emailed me yesterday and said that she's in Virginia teaching a class and will be unable to join us this evening. Next up, we have additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? The understaff report. First up, we have Build or Ban a Status Report for Single Family Home Tax Rebate Program. John?
The city's single-family home tax rebate program in Urbana has successfully encouraged construction of new single-family and duplex housing in Urbana by providing incentives to builders, developers, and homeowners since March of 2001. The program rebates the property tax difference between the total tax rates in the cities of Urbana and Champaign to the owners of new homes. A number of developments in Urbana have been built, have built homes, under the program. And with us tonight, Carl Hill, who is a developer and past president of the Home Builders Association of East Central Illinois, is with us to share a few of his thoughts on the program's impact for single-family housing. The program was conceived when the city builders, developers, under the leadership of the UBA and the UDBA, decided that single-family home starts needed to be increased in Urbana. At that time, single-family home starts were comparably lower to the rates in surrounding communities. So in March of 2001, the tax rebate program was approved by the city council under Resolution Number 2001-02007R. And it has the characteristics and guidelines. They're included at the bottom of Page Two on your report. Under the Build Urbana program, the city, as well as the UVA and the Builders Association, as well as other groups promoted Build Urbana, as well as its tax rebate program through a series of promotional events, advertising, and press releases. In July of 2001, the council included zero lot line homes, including townhouses, condominiums, and duplexes. The council also extended the program until December 1st, 2004, in the following year. The tax rebate program has had an immediate impact, or had an immediate impact, on the housing starts in Urbana. That first partial year, the housing starts, single-family housing starts jumped to 83, as you'll note in your chart at the bottom of Page Three. The next year, we had a full year in 2002, and the number of housing starts was 176. In the following year, 159. And this year, to date in 2004, we have 82 starts, single-family home starts, in Urbana. The total for all single-family and duplex units built under the tax rebate program as of June 23rd, 2004 is 514. And our housing starts are comparable, the rates are comparable to surrounding communities. The fiscal impacts from the tax rebate program have been substantial. Over one and a quarter million dollars annually are distributed over the taxing districts in the city of Urbana from those homes that have been built under the tax rebate program. The city of Urbana itself receives over $236,000 annually from taxes generated by those homes that have been built there. In the long term, we see even more revenues from this program. Currently, the investment, the cost of the program, has leveraged seven times the amount of investment as the cost of the program. In the next 50 years, we see over $49 million being generated for the taxing districts in the city of Urbana. Urbana itself will see over $9 million in the next 50 years. In conclusion, the Build Urbana Tax Rebate Program has increased housing starts, as well as housing developments, for single-family housing. And that's created additional housing opportunity, as well as increased tax base for the taxing districts in the city of Urbana. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Ms. Pat?
Thank you. In the report that we received, it made mention of specific subdivisions and gave the impression that this only, program only applied in certain subdivisions. And I correct in understanding that this applies to any single-family, new single-family home built anywhere in the city?
Correct.
Even if it's on an empty lot in an already developed neighborhood?
A new single-family home construction. Yes, Ms. Pat?
Thank you.
Other questions from committee members? Mr. Adams?
I just have a comment. I'll confess, when I ran for city council, I was somewhat skeptical of the program. But we now have a chance to see the results. And this has been a home run for taxpayers in the city of Urbana. You know, the city alone has $170,000 in property tax income that it would not have otherwise received. That's a big chunk. I mean, when you consider that our budget is basically evenly balanced, if we had to come up with that $170,000 this year, we'd either be passing a substantial tax increase or making very painful cuts in services and perhaps laying off employees. One of the nice things about the way the program is structured is, since the city of Urbana has the same tax rate as the city of Champaign, it hasn't cost the city of Urbana anything this year. The school district has a higher tax rate, so that, you know, they have had to pay some rebates. But even they are coming out over half a million dollars ahead of where they would be if we didn't have this program, if our housing starts had continued as they've been before. When you look at the kind of budget difficulties that the school district is in, that extra $500,000 is a big boost. It makes a big difference to the children in our community in terms of the quality of their education, not having to go through further cuts. So I've been converted from somebody who was somewhat skeptical to somebody who's an enthusiastic supporter. It's a home run for the taxpayers. It's been a big home run for the school district and for the children in this community. And I hope we can continue it and continue to see these kinds of results.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Wyman?
I have a few questions. I'm wondering what it's looking like as far as the forecast for this year, if we're, if it's looking like, I know we've got, you said, 82 single-family home starts or 84 counting duplexes, but I'm wondering, by the end of the year, are we going to hit the 159 that we did in 2003? Or what's it looking like?
I think we're on pace to hit that number, certainly.
Okay. And at what point does the, is there a point at which the housing, the amount of housing meets the actual cost or expenses for infrastructure that the city has laid out? Is there, or does, is the amount of housing, the new housing starts, is that always going to continue to add more revenue than it costs for the school district or the sanitary district, the city, to cover those infrastructure needs?
Well, if we take a look at Table One, and we look at the costs, well, and those are the costs of the rebates. I guess with costs of infrastructure, we need to weigh, you know, what the new developments are requiring for infrastructure and what the city has to lay out for investments to accommodate that infrastructure with expansions. But from what we're seeing in this report and what we've seen in the past, that it will continue to add to the tax base and exceed the cost of the infrastructure. I don't know. That's more of a question for Bill to answer, as far as infrastructure versus the taxes that are generated by the homes. But from what we're seeing in this report, yes, it will continue to add to the revenues, the net revenues.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Ms. Pat?
Thank you. The offset of infrastructure costs by the benefit of increased tax revenue was one of the things that was discussed when, three years ago, when we adopted this program. And our thinking at the time, which I think still holds true, is that the city already invested in the infrastructure. And the subdivisions were in place, and so it was a matter of getting a return on the investment that we had already made, whether or not we had this program. And this program has brought the return on that investment much faster than we would have seen if we didn't have the program.
So that's in large part true. And a good example of that is where our fire substation is located out in southeast Urbana. And all of the, that are being built in that area are currently with, within the service area of that substation. So there was a huge area that was potential, potential for development that was not stretching our existing. That's true of some of the roadways and sewers as well. But that's a really good example, is the fire station was there and being underutilized.
Other comments or questions?
I guess I'd just make one other observation. $170,000 in additional revenues basically looks only at property tax. But to really look at the impact for the city, you'd have to look at the additional sales tax, the additional share of income tax in future years, once those people are included in the census, the additional share of, you know, grants from community development, block grants, and that sort of thing. I mean, property tax makes up, what, only 20%, about 20% of the revenues of the city. So, you know, if it has a proportional impact on the others, you would be looking at more like $850,000 in terms of additional revenue, which is, again, just tremendous.
Yes.
I guess, is it appropriate for Mr. Hill to speak after the council's done with questions?
Well, yeah, he'll be up very shortly unless we want to change the agenda order to, I still have his card here to speak during public input. Ms. Wyman?
I guess, as far as questions go, is there any reason why we shouldn't look at extending the, this program, the single-family home tax rebate program, for another year or two years?
I don't see any reason why not.
Okay. Then I presume from staff, we'll be seeing something before the December 1st date when this expires. Is that right, to extend the program?
That's correct.
I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Great. Next up, we have staff report. I believe Mayor Satterthwaite has an oversized check to show us.
Quite an oversized check. There was a ceremony this morning. Ms. Wyman and I attended on behalf of the city. Mr. Walden was there. The foundation presented this check, or a smaller version of this check, to the city in the amount of $2 million for their contribution to the library expansion project. It's truly a remarkable feat that they were able to accomplish. I was telling the group that was gathered this morning, when I was doing a little bit of reading on fundraising campaigns for libraries before we started, this was some years ago, San Francisco had just completed a very successful fundraising campaign from the public and had raised $3 million in the city of San Francisco. And so for us, at a fraction of the size of San Francisco, to get a contribution of $2 million from our foundation is just an incredible feat. And it just shows the dedication that the members of the foundation had to the project and the level of support that our library enjoys in the community. This was done at a time, or after a time, when the library fundraising consultant suggested that we could expect maybe $500,000 or $750,000 to be raised in our campaign. And one of the reasons he noted was that we don't have a real corporate anchor to really highlight the campaign and get it, jump-started. But we had a number of dedicated people that have given tens of thousands, in some cases hundreds of thousands of dollars, to the library expansion project. It's been going on for a number of years. They don't want to quit. They're going to be continuing to get donations for other projects for the library in the future. One thing that they announced today was a brick sale for people that want to participate and get their name lasered into a brick and have that set in a plaza right by the library. They'll have an opportunity to do that. And that will be used, the funds for that, they're targeting for a piece of public art that would be displayed on or near the library grounds. So I can't say enough about the success of the Library Foundation's campaign. They've been terrific all the way through. And again, to get a check like this from them is just an incredible accomplishment. So thanks to the foundation, all the donors, and everybody that's worked on that campaign.
Anything else?
Nope. Do you have anything? Staff report?
No, just one comment on the Build Urbana program. If we're going to extend it, probably the sooner is better for the reason that some people are thinking about buying in this period between now and the end of December. And they would know it would be there when it, because they may not be able to get their building permit. So it's probably in our interest, if we're going to do it, to do it sooner versus later. So we'll be working on that.
Next up, we have minutes from the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have public input. Mr. Hill, I know you've been waiting now. Would you like to come up and talk about the Build Urbana program?
My name's Carl Hill. My job is on Trail Drive, representing Hillshire Construction, Hillshire Development, and also the Home Builders Association of East Central Illinois. And possibly the Urbana Business Association might interject a thought or two. Something that came to mind, Ruth, when we were talking about the infrastructure and what extra costs there might be in the future regarding the development, what's happening. Of all of the items enumerated by Mr. Gray at the time, the one thing that seems to stick in people's mind, and it might bring back that conversation to your mind, was that we are a two-sweeper, street sweeper town. So we don't have to buy another street sweeper when we're developing all these areas, all the different subdivisions. And we have a lot of streets already in. Stone Creek, for example, has many lots available. So it's going to be quite, probably quite some time before we actually see any increased costs. But I don't think we'll ever get to the point, because of the level, price level of most of the housing, that we'll see expenses exceeding income. It's not there. So we'll always, as the city of Urbana, and the money that's generated through taxes, we'll always see an advantage to having more development. It's just the way it's built. And hopefully, we'll keep it going. I do want to keep it short. I know we've got some other things to do, but I do want to encourage you to look at that extension of the Build Urbana program, as Bruce Walden, or I guess he's CAO, I keep thinking of CEO, but he helped us to get things started way back, when we started looking at the program. He did a great job in helping us, the UBA, the UDBA, kind of see what it is that we could do. And one of the things that was implemented at that time, and I think he was a big force behind that, was what change was made in the Community Development Department and code enforcement. I cannot tell you the change that has taken place and the way that people have responded in that department to the needs and to the wants of developers and builders. We have basically had a 180 regarding how people feel about the city of Urbana and building in Urbana. Unfortunately, there are still a few builders that haven't built here yet and haven't found out yet. So we're still working on some of those. But it looks like the program has been successful, and it looks like the efforts made by Community Development have been exceptional. And someday, somebody's going to write a book and say, "This is what changed the history of Urbana." And I hope that proper due is given to the people that really, really made it go. And thanking you guys for stepping out, because I know there was some hesitancy at first, not knowing for sure how the program is going to work. But as you can see, it does work, and we hope to be able to continue it down the road. And if there's any other questions, that's all I really would need to say.
Ms. Wyman?
I have a question and then a comment. When is the parade of homes for Urbana?
Thanks for asking that. Normally, we have that just after the showcase of homes. The showcase of homes was in Mohammed this year, put on by the Home Builder Association. We had about 13,843 people visiting that site. Not quite the record, 14,000, a little over 14,000 last year. Although we had a few rain nights, so we had a good excuse for not beating that record. But normally, go right after that. Because of the success, we could say, of the Build Urbana program, there wasn't anything available, because it was all sold. So what we decided to do, we wanted to get more developers, more builders involved, so we moved it back to October 2nd and 3rd. So that there are, there are some developments that are now being built, streets now being put in, another subdivision where dirt is just beginning to be moved, that would allow these people then to have some product, something to show for our home parade. So by moving it back this year, we're able to probably bring in another seven or eight homes into the show that we would not have had otherwise. Long answer to a short question.
Thank you. And I just wanted to comment, just a note of gratitude for all the work that you've done, as far as people who have made this program and this project a success. You and Mr. Tatman certainly are right there at the top and just have really shown how this can, this can work and really promoted it, and certainly appreciate all the work you've done on this.
Everybody working together. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Hill? Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
We have one other public comment card, but that person has expressed a desire to speak during the item when it's discussed on the agenda. So next up, we have ordinance number 2004, day of 05, day of 053, an ordinance regarding city officials and employee ethics and political activity. Mr. Holt?
Thanks. So we went over this pretty thoroughly two weeks ago. I don't know if you have any questions you want to ask of me. I would like to comment. I did speak, Ms. Pat, if I may mention, with Ms. Pat shortly beforehand, and she was asking a little bit about the commission recommendation made by the Attorney General's Office. I have copies of that, and I'll be able to distribute those, but you don't have time to look at them over right now.
Questions, comments? Ms. Pat?
I spoke with Mr. Holtz, as he mentioned earlier today, because I was giving more thought to the idea of a commission and the benefit of having some, some independent body. Then we were just kicking around the idea of how to ensure that the commission would be an independent body, and neither of us had a certain answer for tonight, unless you've come up with something in the last hour, Steve.
No miracles here.
But if, I think it might be worth giving some thought to how to do that, because it probably would, as long as we're adopting this law and creating some mechanism, I think that, that the spirit of the, of the ethics ordinance would best be carried out by having an independent body that is something outside of the city's structure for oversight and enforcement of the ordinance.
Questions or comments? Mr. Adams?
Yeah. I had, the last time we discussed this, made a number of comments, and Ms. Pat suggested I look up the Corrupt Practices Act. So with the help of Mr. Holtz, I've actually done a little bit of research. Basically, what the Corrupt Practices Act prohibits is public officers and elected officials from having a direct or indirect interest in any contract or the sale or purchase of any property. That's a simplification, but I think that's basically what it gets at. The interesting thing about the Corrupt Practices Act is, at least to my mind, I think it has a number of flaws. One of them is that its consequences are quite severe. You can't satisfy it just by recusing yourself from a specific matter. You have to resign your office to satisfy the dictates of the Corrupt Practices Act. You can't merely abstain from the particular matter in which you might have financial interest. The other shortcoming of it, I mean, that's the one shortcoming, which is that it's too severe. Because it's so severe, it then doesn't reach spouses or domestic partners. It also doesn't reach employees, directors, or officers of companies that may have an interest in a contract with the city, or maybe buying or selling property with the city. And I think those are things that obviously need to be covered. You know, I'm planning on marrying a graphic designer who at one time had an independent graphic design business. Assuming we get married, although it'd be improper for me to sign a contract for graphic design with the city. Under the Corrupt Practices Act, she could, and it would not be a violation of that act. And that seems to me to be an unusual result. You know, similarly, if I were to be the owner of a company that was seeking a city contract, I would have to resign my office. But if my wife were the owner and I were the CEO, but didn't actually have an ownership interest in the company, I could, in theory, go ahead and contract with the city and not run afoul of the Corrupt Practices Act, at least the way I understand it. So I think it has loopholes you can drive a truck through, and it also has consequences that are, in some cases, quite draconian. So while we can't change the Corrupt Practices Act, I think in our own ethics ordinance, we can try to craft something that does make sense, and I think comports with most people's sense of ethics, in that it would cover spouses and domestic partners, and it would reach employees, directors, or officers of a company that's seeking to contract or buy or sell property with the city of Urbana. But it could be satisfied by simply recusing yourself from discussions and any official actions on the matter. So I know it would take, it'll take some time and work for staff to draw up a proposal along these lines. But I think it's something that we ought to do. It's something that comports with everybody's general sense of ethics. It would allow us to close up some of the loopholes that are in the Corrupt Practices Act, but do it in such a way that's sensible, so that an employer officer could satisfy it by recusing themselves from a matter in which they might potentially have an indirect financial interest.
Ms. Wyman?
I'm wondering, Mr. Adams, if you'd be so kind as to give us the statutory citation for that?
I don't have it here with me. If I can borrow a booklet, I can certainly. When I was talking with Ms. Holtz, Mr. Holtz, he provided me with the Manual on Conflict of Interests and Liability of Illinois Elected Officials. And it has a quite useful discussion, not only of the statute, but also of the Attorney General opinions and the various court decisions interpreting the Corrupt Practices Act. The act itself is 50 ILCS 105 slash 3.
105 slash 3?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
But I would really encourage you to get in contact with Mr. Holtz, read the manual, because there's a number of important court decisions interpreting the act, and Attorney General opinion interpreting the act in ways that are not necessarily intuitive, just looking at the plain language of the statute. looking at the plain language of the statute.
Mr. Holt, I'm wondering if you'd be so kind as to provide me, and I presume other council members, with copies of this?
Sure. It might be a good idea for us to just order several. I ordered it myself, basically, two weeks ago, from the, I think it was put out by the Illinois Municipal League. And I didn't know they had such a thing, and it turns out actually to be very useful, quite comprehensive. So maybe we can find some money somewhere to get one for each of our council members and the mayor.
So is that something you'll take care of, or do we?
Yes, we'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions?
So I guess I would move that we direct staff to prepare for the next city council meeting, a ordinance for discussion and review, I guess not city council meeting, the next committee meeting. An amendment to the Ethics Ordinance that would include, would include in our definition of a conflict of interest or a prohibited activity, contracts or purchases or sales of property involving officers of the city, elected officials, and their spouses or other persons with whom they reside, that would allow them to satisfy that conflict of interest by recusing themselves from any official action or vote. And that would also reach, include in the definition of a conflict of interest if the public official, if the city official or elected official is an employee, director, or officer of an entity seeking to do business with the city.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Motion and a second discussion.
Well, two things. First, I suggest that you not, that the motion not require that this be brought back to the next meeting, but that we ask the staff to bring it back to us as soon as it's ready, because I think it's going to take more than two weeks to work on this.
Right.
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Sure, certainly.
Okay, that's a second here, I would. The other is that I'm, I guess we could change it once we see it, but I'm hesitant to direct the staff to draft the specific legislation that Mr. Otto wishes, without having seen any information whatsoever about what state law provides, actually about anything. I mean, we requested that when we discussed this before. I was extraordinarily surprised to open my packet and find no information about this at all for tonight's meeting, and I did some research on my own, since we were provided with nothing, just looking for different state statutes regarding the issues of conflict of interest, and I found several, and I, though I didn't find the 50 ILCS, so it's 105 three, so I was searching for the wrong thing, but there are a number of them, actually including some that do list, wife, husband, child, grandparent, parent, grandchild, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, brother, sister, first cousin, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, mother-in-law, father-in-law, son-in-law, I won't read the whole list, but, well, I guess I'm almost done, or daughter-in-law, and...
What's the site for that statute?
Well, actually, there are several here, and I'm not, they're not all, and some are about the General Assembly, they're not about city council. I was just looking at what, that particular one I just read from was 50 ILCS 42, and that's, it's unlawful for any person holding an elective office in the state, holding a seat in the General Assembly, or appointed to or employed in any of the offices of the state government, or who's an officer or employee of the Illinois Building Authority, or the Illinois Toll Highway Authority, or who is the wife, husband, et cetera, blah, blah, blah. Let's see. "To acquire any contract or any direct or indirect pecuniary interest in any grant or contract issued pursuant to this act." And that was just one example I mentioned, because it listed all those different relations. There's Disclosure of Interest statute, and, actually, this had to do with municipalities. This was 65 ILCS 5/11-7414.
5/11, can you run that up again?
I'm sorry, 5/11-74-14. And that's titled Disclosure of Interest, and that's, "Any member of the corporate authority of a municipality shall disclose any pecuniary interest in any employment, financing agreement, or other contract made under the provisions of this division before any action by the corporate authority on it, and shall not vote on any such matter." And that goes on to other things. And there were a few others that, some that appeared similar. One was in 20 ILCS, Section 62010, and another 65 ILCS 110/65.
Could you give me that last one again?
Oh, I'm sorry. 65 ILCS 110/65. And then there were some having to do specifically, more with what this Ethics Ordinance that's proposed by the Attorney General, has to do with regard to influencing elections and, or involving state-paid employees, or government-paid employees, in election work, and some stuff about bribes. So actually, there are a number of different laws, and I think we ought to have a look at it, and I'm curious, looking at the one that says you have, I would like, I'm curious under what circumstances one has to resign from public office, if there's some association between their, I don't know, their associates, or I don't know what specifically that law's involved, but I'd like to have a look at that. I'm a little concerned with what Mr. Otto's, his oral recitation of this long motion, the, I think that you're, I'm not sure, but I'm concerned based on the conversation at the last meeting, that you're looking at too broad, that you're not looking at financial and legal interests, that you're trying to look at something else. And at the last meeting, you'd said something about some association with people seeking some official city action, as opposed to seeking some benefit, and I think that there's an important distinction there. For example, I'll just give an example, this is something that hasn't happened. I sit on the Steering Committee of the local chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union. If the American Civil Liberties Union came to the city council asking for money for the American Civil Liberties Union, I would abstain from the vote, because I would have a conflict of interest being involved with both the ACLU and the City of Urbana. If the Steering Committee of the American Civil Liberties Union were voting on whether or not to sue the city, as an ACLU member, I would abstain from the vote on the Steering Committee, because I would have a conflict of interest being a city council member. If the ACLU came to the City of Urbana asking us to vote on a resolution condemning the Patriot Act, I would not abstain. I don't think there's any reason I should abstain, because there is no, the interest is not a financial or a legal interest. The interest may be intellectual or emotional, but there is no conflicting interest. And I think that's a very important distinction.
Sure.
You know, if the benefit, if the benefit to the individual council member is a smile on their face or a warm feeling in their heart, that's not something that should be prohibited by law. If it's a dollar in your pocket, that's what the legal conflict of interest is about.
Sure. As...
Ms. Pat, were you finished?
I guess, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Otto, you had some comments?
As I had stated in the motion, actually, I wasn't covering any kind of a legal interest, I was covering purely financial interest. So it would be an interest in a contract or the sale or purchase of property to the city, to or from the city. So it would be, I mean, that is something we talked about last time, but the motion as I've made it tonight is fairly specific in terms of dealing with financial interests.
Well, if, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I think one of the things I heard that concerned me was, I didn't hear, I mean, I don't remember now your exact words before the first part of the sentence, was the, a person being, what'd you say, a direct, an owner, a director, an employee, something else?
Employee director or officer of an entity.
Employee director or officer. Well, I guess it would, it would depend, well, I'll give you an example. When I first came onto the city council, I received a letter from the then-city attorney, Jack Waller, on the subject of my voting on anything having to do with the champagne or ban of tenant union. There was no matter pending before the council, he just chose to send me this opinion. And what, and I don't have it with me, I have it somewhere in my file, so what Mr. Waller said was, that it was his opinion, that since I'm the director, voting on any matter pertaining to money for the tenant union would be, it would be best if I would abstain from such a vote, even if the money itself was not going to me, because as the director, I'm responsible for the money it gets, or something like that. I mean, I see that, that's, I would have made that call without advice. He said, "It might be different if you were, say, the secretary at the organization, because then you don't have that responsibility for the money that comes in, if your salary weren't being paid by it." And I thought that was an important distinction. As I said, it wasn't relevant, but in terms of my understanding of how these things work. I was speaking with my friend Shirley Stillinger, who served on the county board from 1980 to 1994, and most of that time, from 1983 to 94, she was director of a women's fund. When she became director of a women's fund, she asked the state's attorney for a legal opinion as to whether she should abstain from voting on appointing members of the mental health board, because the mental health board distributes funds to a number of entities, one of which was the entity that she was director of. The state's attorney, Tom DeFonis, who's now Judge DeFonis, said, "No, she had no reason to abstain, even though she was not only an employee of a women's fund, she was the director of a women's fund, because she wasn't voting on her own salary, she was voting on appointing the people who made the decision." Those are just a few examples about the, that bring to my mind the importance of making the distinction between whether someone has an actual financial interest in a decision, or whether someone has a tangential association to the decision. And I think that it's an important distinction, unless the law, unless the law says otherwise, I think it makes sense that people not be considered to have a conflict when they have a tangential relationship, or when the matter does not involve money, because what's important is that people in government refrain from participating in decisions that put money into their pockets or the pockets of their organizations.
Yeah, I don't think we really disagree. The, based on, you know, what I've read from the Illinois Municipal League discussing the statute and the various cases, it appears to me that Shirley Stillinger could probably vote on appropriating money to women's fund and not run afoul of the Corrupt Practices Act, because she doesn't own it. Surprisingly enough, it seems like a very counterintuitive result, but nevertheless, that's the way the statute and the cases interpreting it seem to come down. Similarly, in the cases you've just talked about with Mr. Waller and Mr. DeFonis giving the opinions, what they're giving you is legal opinions, which are stating what the law is, as opposed to what the law should be. And what I am proposing is that, not that the secretary would have to either quit her job at the tenant union, or, you know, quit her post on city council, but simply that even a secretary at the tenant union would have to accuse herself from discussions or official actions that would provide money to the tenant union. And I think, actually, if you think about it, you'd probably agree with me, that, yeah, even a secretary probably shouldn't go ahead and vote to provide money to the tenant union when that's her employer. I mean, it seems fairly straightforward to me. How could she possibly, even if she were trying really, really hard, provide a neutral, independent opinion on that, when it's her employer? You know, if she does appropriate the money, the first question when she comes into work in the morning, maybe not from her boss, but from coworkers or other people, is going to be, "Well, why not?" And it seems to me to be very, to just say, you know, "In that case, you don't have to resign your office or anything, but you ought to recuse yourself, you ought not to vote or participate in the discussion, when there's a financial relationship going on between the city and your employer."
Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I don't mean to hog it, it's in the back for us. Okay. Actually, if I were the secretary in an organization that had five employees, I agree. I would want to abstain, even if it weren't a legal conflict of interest, because more out of concern for having to go back to the office and answer to them about what happened here, than about any potential legal conflict. But let's say you're a secretary for an employer that employs 20,000 people. Do you want to say that that is, that that's a conflict of interest? I mean, if there is no interest, and there is no, and there is no, for conflict of interest, there have to be two interests, that you have an interest up here and an interest there, and so there's a conflict. But if you don't have an interest anyplace other than in the government service, why should we make that unlawful?
Okay. I guess what, I've actually thought about that quite a bit, and within the Corrupt Practices Act, there is an exception for publicly traded companies. But once again, it's sort of, if it's a good thing to do, suppose you work for the phone company, and the city's trying to decide whether to use SBC or McLeod. I think that would be a relevant example. And you work for SBC, which has tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of employees. You're probably right that, you know, your coworkers don't really give a hoot who the City of Urbana is, but there's really, you know, it's not like there's this dying need for a city council member to vote on that. If the interests of the city can be vindicated by the other six members of city council, why not just recuse yourself, and so there's no suggestion, real or imagined, of a conflict of interest? And I think that's the important thing to remember here. We're not talking about draconian consequences. SBC has many, you know, people who are eminently qualified to come and sing the praises of their company and talk about what a wonderful, good deal their phone services. There's no reason, I mean, there's no reason why the person who's a secretary there has to go ahead and explain it as well to city council members. I think their assorted, you know, salesmen and lobbyists and so forth can do a perfectly adequate job of explaining why their service is superior or a better value. So the, I guess what I'm trying to do is establish a broader reach for ethics law, but at the same time, try to humanize it a little bit, where you can satisfy it simply by just recusing yourself and saying, "Well, you know, I really think SBC's a great phone company, but at the end of the day, if they can't convince a majority of the rest of city council that they're a really great phone company, you know, maybe they're not."
Ms. Wyman?
I see where Mr. Otto is coming from, and in general, I agree. I think there are a couple of concerns, so I think that we should be especially concerned about pecuniary and legal interests, and the conflicts of interest that could arise from any votes on the city, or any dealings by the city, or its employees, or its... on the city or any dealings by the city or its, its employees or its, its Council members. But I think that, that there are some other issues that we should also be aware of. One is that there, there is a right and an ability of Council members to recuse themselves from any vote, even if there isn't a conflict of interest. They could just say, "I want to abstain," and, and there's an ability to do so. And so if one is concerned about how others will look on it, on a vote, they can simply abstain. Or if they're not comfortable, for whatever reason, they can simply abstain, regardless of whether there is in fact a conflict of interest or not. The other issue or the other concern I wanted to bring up is something that I think, I feel like we've encountered before on council. And that is, because we are only seven members, for purchases of property, we need, I believe, five votes. For others, we need four votes out of seven. And as, as Council members may recall, often there are one or two, and sometimes three people absent. And so if there's a vote that is taking place and all we have are four Council members or in a, when there's an issue of property, purchase of property on the agenda, only five people, five Council members present, then recusing one or, or being forced to recuse oneself from a vote, not because there is in fact a conflict of interest for pecuniary or legal reasons, but because of, of a tangential reason, I think might preclude some action, some necessary action on the council. So I think that, so I just want to bring that issue up and see if, if there's a way in, in defining the pecuniary, a conflict of interest based on pecuniary or legal reasons, that if we keep it narrow, but remind Council members, as they may already, as we all may already know, that there is an ability and a right to simply recuse despite the absence of a conflict of interest if one is not comfortable. I just wanted to bring up those issues.
Ms. Pat.
Thank you. Actually, if one abstained, there is a distinction between an abstention and a present and an absent. And if one abstains, it's for a conflict of interest. One can abstain for conflict of interest even if they don't have a legal conflict of interest, because they fear it is. But then it's important, that's why whenever someone here says abstain, the mayor says, "Is that for a conflict of interest?" Because it affects the total number of votes that are counted. If one abstains for a conflict of interest, in terms of counting up the, the total votes, that person, it's as though that person were absent. But not in the case, I mean, Ms. Wyman is right, in the cases where, where six votes are required for a specific action, or five, we'd have a problem if, if two people abstained for a conflict of interest and then we fell short of the total, even if it was something that were unanimously supported by, by everyone else. And of course, one also has the option of leaving the room and being absent, or one, one can vote present. I, and I think that, you know, the point is well made, that, that we, we certainly want to protect from, protect the public interest by preventing policymakers from making decisions that have, that benefit, have a potential to benefit them. That's, that's what the essence is of the conflict of interest law. That, Mr. Otto keeps saying two things, though. One, that in those cases where the state law requires a person to give up their office, he wishes to have a lesser penalty, or not lesser penalty, but that, that a person should be able to recuse themselves rather than, maybe I'm not understanding. Okay, you're not saying that. Okay, because that was my.
There's nothing we can do to change state law. And I don't propose to, to try it. This would simply be our own independent ordinance.
Right.
Setting out our ethics rules with a lower penalty than is in state law, but with a broader scope.
Right. Right. With a broader scope, exactly. And that's, that's the part that I, I find potentially problematic. There is, there are reasons other than neglect on the part of state lawmakers, that, that state law does, is, is not as restrictive as perhaps is what Mr. Otto is proposing. Let's get back to that SBC example. Let's say I'm a Secretary at SBC, and I'm a City Council member. And the City Council is voting on setting the rate for taxes on phone bills. The rate of the taxes on phone bills is something that affects the public. It's, it, I suppose there's, well, I suppose, obviously, the SBC might have an interest in it. But if as a person at SBC, if my position in the organization is such that I am not involved in the decision-making process at SBC, then I don't see how I would have a conflict of interest voting on it. And as far as, well, does it really matter? You know, we are seven people making a decision. And if, and even if everyone showed up, if we were divided four to three on whether to raise the tax or whether to lower the tax, that, it would be significant, a significant matter whether or not a Council member could vote. And so then, in that case, does that conflict, that Council member have a conflict of interest in voting on setting a tax rate when the issue really is how much the public will pay and what is, and what is the municipal government requiring in, in the way of revenue? There is no benefit to that individual employee.
Yeah.
And that is the type of thing that I don't, I don't think, unless there's, unless there's law already that says, "Yeah, that person should abstain," I'm not interested in the City of Urbana crafting legislation that reaches that far, because it's not necessary and it doesn't get to the heart of the issue, which is, one should not be using one's public position to, to fill one's pockets. That's, that's what the essence of conflict of interest law, and we should take, and that is something that should be taken seriously, and, and something that, that, that the law should prohibit. But I don't think that it should be going to the point where, especially on small bodies like City Councils, where we have people having to abstain from important policy matters that matter to their constituents and to the welfare of the city for really no good reason at all. I wrote that as the con, that the abstention is really for no good reason at all, other than we wrote this terribly strict law. That's what my concern is.
Mr. Otto.
It's not a terribly strict law, and it wouldn't apply to that situation. It applies only to contracts and the purchase or sale of property. So setting tax levels, I mean, that may fall into this sort of legal instance that Ms. Wyman has raised. And perhaps we should try to do something on those issues as well. I'd be trying, I'd be willing to consider it. But I guess my motion and what I'm proposing is very narrow in terms of the subject matter, in that it applies to contracts and the sale or purchase of property.
Other discussion on the matter?
I guess it's just basically a, a question to clarify. And if I could state, what I understand, the, the, the motion is requesting that staff come back when they are ready, presumably after they're able to put something in our Thursday packet, so that we can discuss it at a future committee meeting, an idea of a City Officials and Employee Ethics and Political Activities Ordinance, and that it would address pecuniary and legal.
Not legal.
I'm sorry?
Pecuniary.
Just pecuniary.
Not legal.
And not legal concerns regarding ethics and political activity. Is that what the maker and the secondor understand the motion to be?
If I could restate the motion, perhaps that could help clear it.
Mr. Otto.
Okay. So I'm moving that city bring, city staff bring back for discussion, an amendment to the current proposed ethics ordinance that would require city elected officials or officers to recuse themselves from decisions involving the sale or purchase of property with the city or contract with the city, and involving themselves or their spouses or their domestic partners and, or any entity of which they are an employee, a director, or an officer. That's, that's specifically what I'm proposing.
Is there any other clarification necessary? With the motion in a second, are we ready for a vote? Ms. Wyman.
Actually, I just wanted to make a comment. I, in listening to the debate and the comments, especially between Mr. Otto and Ms. Pat, I think that it would make more sense to have, regarding the, the Officer, the Director, the employee to be an employee with a pecuniary conflict of interest, rather than just any employee, as the most, since the motion is as it is. Just, I think that, that that'll be a change that I'll be looking for, at least on the floor, when we discuss this next. If, and whether it's just taking that intri, that definition from one of the state statutes that, that we have or from the Municipal League booklet that Mr. Hulse is going to get us, or, or some other area that some, that either staff or, or the Council members have is fine. But I think that, that's it, that's just to put on notice, that's an issue that I'll be looking at. Thank you.
Ms. Pat.
I have a question for either Mr. Hulse or Mr. Otto. Are you aware of any other municipalities that have, that have their own ordinances in the state of Illinois that, that extend beyond the provisions of Illinois state law?
I'm not aware of any, but it's not something I've actually looked for. I've tried to figure out, you know, what I think makes sense for Urbana. But it's clearly something that is invited in the ethics law, is when they say "no less restrictive than," they're obviously inviting municipalities to pass ethics laws that are more restrictive than the law that, the provisions that the legislature has laid down in their ethics law.
I'm not aware of any off the top of my head, but I can look around and see what I can find and pull together a packet of anything that I find for you.
I would appreciate any information we can. I'm going to go ahead and vote for this motion, even though I have mixed feelings about the direction it's going in. Until we have something in front of us, there's really no, I think, no harm in, in looking into it. You know, other than, than the use of staff time, which there's a great deal of competition for that time. But if, if we can see something and it will improve anything here in city government, I'm all for that. I just want to be certain that we are in fact doing something that will improve city government and not, and not have a negative impact for, for purposes that are either undesirable or, or just unnecessary.
Any other comments or discussion before vote?
Could we get a recorded vote?
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
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 Mr. Otto?
Yes.
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 We'll see that in however long it takes staff to pull that together for us. Next up, we have.
Excuse me.
Yes.
We didn't actually vote on the, I mean, I guess the way we did, we asked them to bring it back. But with regard to the, the Ethics and Political Activity, the, the actual agenda item, which is separate from Mr. Otto's item, do we, is it, do we need to take action on that? Or is it just assumed that's going to come back with, with the, the draft of the new ordinance that was requested?
Mr. Hulse?
Well, it's up to you. I mean, I interpreted Mr. Otto's comments as being directly part of the Ethics and Political Activity Ordinance that's in the packet here now. And we, you can do it either way. You can vote on what's in the packet, actually was brought to you a couple of weeks ago, or, and then come up with additional restrictions along the lines of what you've just suggested. Or you can try and fold it all together. Up to you.
Ms. Wyman.
I'll move that we postpone consideration of ordinance number 2004-05-053, an ordinance regarding City Officials and Employee Ethics and Political Activity until such time as the materials requested by staff are brought back and put in our council packets.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Pat.
I think it would be productive toward ultimately passing this if, if those materials included more information about ethics commissions, so that if we were pursuing the, the commission route, rather than have the, the internal ethics officer.
Any other comments or discussion?
Does that need to be part of the motion, or is that just?
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of postponing consideration, say aye.
Aye.
See that? And staff is able to get to that. Next up, we have traffic commission items. Mr. Gray, would you like to discuss all three of these items for us?
Recent traffic commission meetings, we had three items for council consideration and action. The first one is Saline Court. Saline Court is a fairly new street that is on North Lincoln Avenue, that is part of a new subdivision. And some of the conditions for that particular street width and working with the developer, property owner, was to have a street of a certain width that precluded any parking on the street. So now that the street is completed and, and has been accepted, it's appropriate now that we look at no parking on both sides of the street. Again, this is Saline Court. There is one business up there now, and it's 11-acre parcel for essential waste services. There's other parcels that are yet to be developed, but that's what this particular action is. If there's any questions?
Questions on this first item?
Okay. Second item is, council may recall, last several weeks ago, there was action taken to prohibit parking on the north side of Florida Avenue, which in essence would be no parking on both sides of Florida Avenue. In a similar fashion, the street width here was determined in working with this developer and a previous developer and setting a street width that would not allow parking on the street. And it involved funding availability, et cetera. So what the Florida Avenue is designed to be is a one lane of traffic in each direction and a continuous left turn lane, if you will, for this and other streets, the north-south streets where people can turn left. Residents in the area, when the signs went up, felt that there was no notification or knowledge that this would be a no parking street as they bought homes or built homes in the area. This knowledge, they did not have. The developer-owner was aware of the situation, but not residents. So the traffic commission reviewed this item. It was reflected in the June minutes. And basically, what we're looking for is a two-year reprieve that, and up until Florida Avenue being extended to High Cross Road, admittedly, the traffic volumes aren't quite as high now, because it is in essence a dead-end street to the east. But once it is extended to High Cross, there would be much higher traffic volumes. And the street should appropriately revert to its original intentions and design, which would be no parking. So this is kind of a, to mention, my words, a reprieve. It's, it's to alert the folks that do live in Florida that, okay, you can park there now, for now as you have when you first moved in. But at some point, within the next two years, the no parking will be returned, and appropriate plans or what have you would have to be made. So that's, this is kind of an unusual situation. But anyway, this is what's before you right now. I'll stop and see if there's any questions for this.
Questions from committee members? This is the item that I have the public comment for. So if you would allow Mr. John Farney to come up.
Sure.
He's 2504 East Florida, on the Savannah Green Parking Ordinance in acquisition.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this matter. I attended the traffic commission meeting a few weeks ago. Several items that were mentioned tonight are very true. The developer in this sub- The developer in this subdivision has been less than forthcoming with information about the actual development. The parking issue totally blindsided the 19 homes on Florida Avenue, and I can say this, I am also a member of the Savannah Green Homeowners Association's Board. This was an issue that has come up before us several times in the very short time that we've had a homeowners association board. So, it's an item that has concerned many of the residents on the street. One of the, I stated that I was in opposition to this ordinance and my opposition is in the way it is written. It includes allowing for the parking on the north side of Florida Avenue, but not for the, for example, at Oglethorpe Avenue, 92 feet west of the center line and 98 feet east of the center line. If you're familiar with the Savannah Green subdivision, the lots in that subdivision are very narrow with the garages on the back of the lot coming in off an alley. When you pace off those measurements, you basically, the houses on either end of the street have no parking in front and they will have no parking on the side streets either. That has also been marked off to be no parking. So, while you're fixing the problem, as we residents see it, for the three houses that are in the middle of the block, the people on the ends of the block, the two houses on either end of the block, are still in the same situation. It has fixed nothing for them. They still have no parking around their home. They have simply two spots in a driveway coming off of an alley in the back of the home. On top of that, the homes were not designed to have entrance from the back of the home. The back of the home is intended just to be your garage, bring in your groceries or what have you, that type of things. Main entrances were designed on the front of these homes. That's why it's important to have the parking on the front of the homes. There are no sidewalks around the garages. You have to be able to open the main garage door to go through any of the garages or walk through a yard. Not very convenient in the winter time. So, those are some of the issues with the parking that I've seen, but mostly my concern is the way that the owners knew nothing about the no parking. While I appreciate the idea of Florida Avenue going through to High Cross Road, and hopefully it does within two years, that would be absolutely wonderful for access to those avenues to the north and east, I, I don't understand why we need three lanes with a left turn lane through that subdivision. The road doesn't really widen that much from areas west of Kinch, where it is two lanes with parking on one side of the road, for example, in front of the Sunny Crest Apartments. There's parking along the street there. The street width is basically the same. As a resident of Savannah Green, I think it would be only fair that we consider removing parking the entire length of Florida Avenue if we're going to have to remove it in that area, especially with the left turn lanes basically serving only the residents of Savannah Green. Those roads will all end at the north end of Savannah Green. They won't go into the Prairie Greens subdivision. So I, I really would like to ask the council to consider keeping parking open there along Florida Avenue. I know the residents would certainly appreciate it and I thank you very much.
Questions for Mr. Farney? Thank you. Go, Ms. Pat.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just not clear on, where is it that you think we should continue to allow, oh, where do you want us to keep parking?
I'd like you to keep parking along the entire north side of Florida Avenue, including on the corners. The corners of each of the streets in Savannah Green, that would be Smith Road, Oglethorpe Avenue and Abercorn Street. It's proposed that there would be no parking on the 90-degree corners on either side. And I can understand having no parking right where the stop sign is, but on the other side of the street, the parking is also being eliminated for those homeowners.
I, I believe that the reason for, for allowing parking on the street but stopping it before the corner is, is for visibility for a driver, say, coming, coming down Oglethorpe to be able to see whether or not a car is coming on Florida before they turn right or left.
Sure, I could absolutely understand that for some distance, but not for a lot and a half. Basically, that area is taking up a lot and a half and you're not going to be able to see through a house to see a car. So, I believe during the traffic commission meeting, Mr. Smith explained to us that the idea of allowing no parking on the corners was actually to appease one resident who liked to be able to look at Stone Creek Golf Course.
Okay, so you support parking on the north side of Florida?
Absolutely.
And you don't have a problem with the idea of the, the safety distance from the corner that, that exists in other places, but you think that the amount proposed is too much?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Other questions for Mr. Farney? Thank you. Mr. Gray, do you have anything to add on this particular traffic commission item?
No, as Ms. Pat mentioned, it's visible, visible, visibility triangle is the reason why those distances were set where they are. So, as far as the north-south streets, unless I'm mistaken, there's parking permitted on one side of the street, not, not the other. So, I'm not quite sure why a corner house wouldn't have parking on the north-south street.
Are there any other?
The, the 92 feet from the, the road, is that, is that the amount, say, in my neighborhood or your neighborhood, how much space from the intersection is yellow striped when parking is allowed, I guess from the intersection over, normally?
I don't have the formula memorized, but it's 92 feet from the center of the streets, so if you take away the street width, it's not actually 92 feet across one's property. It's, it's, it's less than that. The number may seem a little higher than it actually is, but without going back to the ordinance, I, it can vary from street to street, depends on width, speeds.
Was this more than we have in other places?
It may be if two intersecting local streets, it, it may be a little more than that, yes. I'd have to get back to you. But I know the.
Was it that, was that your intent in, that this provide more no parking space from the, past the intersection than we do in other places?
I didn't explain myself correctly. There's a formula in the ordinance that we use to determine the visibility distances. That is what was used. There's, there's criteria in that. I don't have that memorized, so I can't tell you exactly, but that's the criteria we used in this case to come up with these distances.
And so it would come out to be more than the, a house lot because these lots are smaller?
Has nothing to do with the house lots.
No, you're saying the way, the, oh, the fact, yeah.
These lots are 47 or whatever, 50 feet wide. A lot and a half or two lots in other neighborhoods could be one lot because they're 80, 90, 100 feet wide, yes, that's true. That's true. And that may exacerbate the situation he's, he's mentioning.
Eric, did you have a comment or question?
It's going to be that and, so, and so the, the formula has different distances depending on whether it's an arterial or collector or a neighborhood street. And so, if the designation of Florida is an arterial, it might be a little bit, I'm just guessing, why different than other areas?
It's probably been 10 years since I read that thing. I have staff review that, but I could look it up tonight and, and tell you. I just don't, from memory, don't know, don't recall.
Any other comments or questions on this particular Florida Avenue issue? Mr. Otto?
I just, as chair of the traffic commission, I'd like to, I guess, clarify something. Mr. Farney said, there was one woman who showed up who was quite vehement in support of maintaining no parking, but through a number of other residents who came and did want to have the parking on the north side of Florida Avenue. I think it might have been a little bit unclear. Joe Smith explained to her how, you know, because she lived on the corner and because of the way the formula was structured, there wouldn't be any parking in front of her house, although there would be in front of other people's houses. But I, I don't believe this recommendation was specifically tailored to, to, to address the concerns of that woman, it just, that's the way it turned out. She would have preferred that there wouldn't be any parking in front of her neighbor's houses either, but we decided to go ahead and allow that consistent with the traffic code.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this particular issue? I'm sorry, you're going to go?
No, I'm done.
Final one?
Yes, the third item has to do with a speed study that was performed by staff. There are concerns for folks that live in the Landis subdivision area and where it intersects with Airport Road, which is east of US 45 Cunningham Avenue. For those exiting that subdivision, there is a little bit of a rise or elevation difference in the roadway and for those traveling at a high rate of speed that are heading westbound, that's a safety concern for those pulling out and making a left-hand turn to go west, heading northbound to make a west left-hand turn. We did a study, looked at various criteria that impact setting of speed limits and we feel it's appropriate that this particular stretch of Airport Road, that's currently marked at 45 miles per hour, be 40 miles per hour, which is a safer speed limit given these conditions.
Questions?
All right, I just have one. Does the, when you say you performed an engineering study determining what the average speed was, does that average speed actually affect the recommendation of what would be the proper speed for safety?
That's one thing that we look at, the average speed and the 85th percentile speeds and, in talking to Mr. Smith and looking at driveway accesses and other items that we mentioned there, it's then typical that you would want to go that next five mile increment below or lower than at 40, 40.2, which is 40.
Also, if, if a lot of people were speeding and the average were higher, then that would, a recommendation might be to raise the speed limit because of that or no? I'm just curious. And I think about, about Philo Road where they were.
If the 85th percentile were 52 miles per hour or what have you, then we might say maybe prudent to leave at 45 and not lower it.
I see.
That's what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I see.
It's possible, that's true.
Just think of, but.
But not just for that reason, you would look at other.
There's other criteria.
Usually that.
You lower it, you know, you knock it down about 10% of what the 85th percentile is when you have access, driveway accesses, this vertical curve is a factor, the narrowness of the road is a factor. So those are factors that allow one to reduce that 85th percentile by 10% or more.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this or you? Not a motion or motions in order?
Move that we send it to city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second if that was a motion for omnibus.
Yeah, all three.
Motion and a second, discussions?
Just one point, as, as this, the lone person who spoke on this, on one of these items, mentioned, I think that the homeowners were not alerted to the fact that there was no parking on Florida Avenue when they purchased their homes and if there's a way that when these streets are going in or when new houses are going up, it seems it would make sense to have some sort of signs that say no parking on, on this street or, or something like that so that, so homeowners wouldn't have to, so the city wouldn't have to assume, and in this case incorrectly, that the seller of the homes was providing complete information to the potential home buyers.
That's a, a good point. We discussed that very issue after this came up at our recent meeting and plan to be either one of two things, either get the signs up much quicker prior to even home construction. This was a little unusual as to how quickly the homes were built, literally as the streets were being built. I mean, it was kind of a, all done almost simultaneously, if you will, but it's a, somewhat of a lesson learned here is to not rely on sellers of property and let them know if parking is allowed or not.
That was the only comment, thank you.
I'd just like to request the information, we don't need it tonight, but before next week, the information about the, the formula for determining how, how much space has to be put in.
I'm permitted to speak later this evening, I'll pull it out and I'll let you know.
Okay, all right, but it's not, we're not voting on a final decision until next week, so don't, don't get a lot of trouble if you do tonight.
Any other comments, discussion on this item? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. See that next week. Thank you.